Today for the planning commission on the 20th of January.
About a roll call.
And, and I was just going to ask if we could have a roll call. Thank you.
I can take care of that chair. So we have Chair Brassfield.
Present.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
Here.
And Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Thank you. Looks like we have everybody present today.
Thank you. If we could go to the consent agenda, the minutes for our meeting on the 12th. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment on page five. You get down to the bottom of the page and it's the second to last paragraph. There's a the, the. Just take out one of the does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve as submitted with the the produced just now.
Second.
Thank you. First and second. Any, any comments? All in favor? Let's do a roll call. Go ahead.
Well, because I wasn't there.
Sure. I'll go ahead and do a roll call for that. So we've got Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Epstein.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes, yes.
Double voting.
Oh, and Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to a public comment. Our items not on the agenda?
Sure. Let me just take a moment, Chair, to go over the information on how to submit a public comment for today's meeting. So just a friendly reminder that we do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. Because you're connected live to a secure government meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey where there's an approximately 10 second delay. And on Comcast Channel 25 where there's up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate any of these delays. To join Zoom, the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, please use the link or phone number on the agenda posted at isarchmonterey.com. And since the meeting has already begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. And I just wanted to note the meeting ID for our webinar today is 161-990-8039. And to join by phone, dial 833-568-8864, which is toll free. Or call 669-254-5252. And if you're entering the meeting ID and then prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound. And detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. In order to make a public comment, simply raise your hand using the Zoom function. Or if you're connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. And we ask that the public commenters turn off any TVs or computer speakers. Or simply go to another room while connected by phone as background noise will interfere with the broadcast. And I will call on each speaker in the order of hands raised. And the chair has designated a three minute time limit for today's meeting with a countdown timer shown on the screen. So we ask that you please stay within your time limit. And with that being said, we do have one hand raised. So let me go ahead here. And Marta, you are on with the planning commission. Marta? Marta, we have you on with the planning commission. It does look like you're unmuted. Time to raise your hand. And it looks like there you go. Talking's permitted. If you could just unmute.
Hello?
Yes. Hi, how are you? We can hear you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Sarah, for your offer to help me with the visuals.
Just let me know when you're ready. I'd be happy to pull that up and share my screen.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marta Craftcheck. And I spoke to you last month about MPUSD's plan for a large parking improvement project. At the school district office, 700 Pacific and the Monterey High School campus. This afternoon, I'm here to speak to the historic Carmel stonework at those locations that MPUSD has destroyed. Or allowed to fall into disrepair. Could you please put up number one, please? I sent you a document earlier today as I feel the city of Monterey should be aware of these historic resources and work with MPUSD to protect. And preserve them as the general plan directs the city to do. There is a presumption that local school districts will comply with local zoning ordinances. The draft EIR for the stadium project, whose comment period ended earlier this month. Included analysis of the project under the city codes of Monterey. Unlike the federal properties of the Presidio DLI and the Navy Postgraduate School. Public K through 12 school districts are local agencies. And the school district property is subject to city zoning and building codes. MPUSD has shown little interest in preserving the historic bleachers and did not even want to admit their history. Until locals voiced their concern in 2019 for the Monterey High School Stadium project. Historical consultant Pam Daly identified the bleachers and walls as historic. Recommending that MPUSD hire a historic architect to assist in development of a plan to preserve, restore, and rehabilitate. The physical attributes of the stadium. If you could please show numbers two and numbers three. These are both stone walls at Monterey High School. Consultant Daly says the main set of concrete steps of the bleachers were constructed on the hillside slope in 1917. With the additional sets of concrete steps added in 1925. Recently, during construction of the Science Center, these historic steps were apparently damaged. The repair is obvious and glaring. The color and mortar do not match, and Carmel stone was removed. No effort was made to match the rise and tread of the historic concrete staircase. All in all, a hasty patch job that compromised the historic steps. As you can see from the pictures I sent you, there are many more areas throughout the campus. Can you please share number four? Throughout the campus and at the district office where this historic stonework is present. But currently at risk from the parking improvement project. Number five, please. Our city of Monterey has always prided itself on our history, and I ask that you act now before this historic stonework is removed or further damaged. Please take an active role in the oversight of current MPUSD construction projects. And ensure that they comply with city codes and zoning. I urge the city to help protect these historic resources for our future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah, anymore?
And it doesn't appear that we have any additional public comment at this time.
Thank you. If we could, that's, we, I expect we have a staff presentation for item number three.
We do, Commissioner Brassfield, and Christie Sabdo will be giving that presentation. And just for the record, the title of item number three is to consider an appeal of 500 Del Monte Avenue. Which is appealing the Historic Preservation Commission's no action vote. To remove the property from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. And happy to introduce Christie Sabdo, who will be making the presentation this afternoon.
Hey, good evening. I wanted to ask if you could see my screen that I shared.
You can.
You can. Okay. Thank you. My name is Christie Sabdo, associate planner with the city of Monterey. I will be presenting 500 Del Monte Avenue. Appellant David Howe, who's on with us tonight. Is the appellant on behalf of the property owner, 500 Del Monte LLC. Files an application to appeal Historic Preservation Commission's denial of historic permit 200245. This item has been continued from the January 12th hearing at the appellant's request to ensure that Dr. Anthony Kirk. Could join this meeting tonight, which he is in attendance along with Kent Seavey. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached, I'm sorry, the resolution in your packet. To approve the appeal and adopt a resolution overturning the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. To not take action on the applicant's request to remove the property from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. As background, the lot is approximately 7,000 square feet containing a one and half story commercial building. It was built in 1943 as an electric shop, evolving over time into its present role as a sandwich shop and liquor store. And there's the construction history here. 1943, it was constructed. In 1945, there was an addition to a mezzanine floor. 1978 interior was modified for a sandwich shop use in 1978. In 1979, it was further modified with interior partitioning and modification in 1979 for partial use as a radio station. And then local architect remodeled the original north facing facade as well. So showing the fenestration from 1959 to present. If you look at the north facing facade from this photo circa 1959, you'll note the original pattern of the windows compared to today. And then in 1979, the original fenestration on the primary north facing facade was sufficiently altered during remodeling. The intensive survey noted that the building had lost its integrity of design materials and workmanship. Compromised any sense of time and place or feeling and association it may have had with its 1943 period of use as the Tice Electric Shop. At a hearing on November 12th, 2020, the Historic Preservation Commission did not take action on. The historic permit to remove the property from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. No action was taken due to a lack of majority. So in the Monterey City Code, it states that the planning commission shall consider the record. And such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether in its opinion an error was made. The planning commission shall transmit a copy of its decision to the applicant, appellant, and the body whose action is appealed within 30 days of the hearing. The appellant submitted a peer review by qualified professional Dr. Anthony Kirk. Who evaluated the intensive survey for 500 Del Monte Avenue. Dr. Kirk, in an evaluation dated December 2nd, peer reviewed the intensive survey. That concludes that the property at 500 Del Monte Avenue was not eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Or the California Register of Historic Places and should be removed from the city of Monterey's list of potentially historic places in the downtown area. Applicant David Howe is with us tonight, as well as Dr. Anthony Kirk and Kent Seavey. If you have any questions for them. That's the end of my presentation.
Anybody have questions for Christine? I have, do have one question, Chris.
Sure.
The, on the. How much does the changes in say the window pattern and the second story apply to historic applications and approval of?
That was part of the significant changes that were noted in the 1979 remodeling. And I think we could ask for further clarification from the architectural historians on the call.
That's, where's my next? Okay. Any other questions before we move it to the applicant?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Dawson. The, when you state that there was a lack of majority, does that, you could also say that there was a tie vote. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, that's accurate. This is Kim Cole. The vote was three to three. And so the, the motion failed to pass to take any action on the request.
Got you. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. Normally, when people want their residence or building or business declared historic, there's a reason for it. And obviously, there's a reason for wanting it removed from the historic list. Beyond just the status of the building itself. Are we aware of the reason for why we would want it or not want it as an historic building since the HPC was tied?
So I think the property owner is looking at his options for the property and what the future would involve. And sort of a key decision is going to be whether or not these properties are historic resources. If they're potentially historic resources, that will change the lens that they'll look at the property through. So I think it's helping them reach a conclusion on how to move forward with the property. And I do want to point out that our reconnaissance level surveys were intended to provide base information. So it was always intended that an intensive survey would follow. And a conclusion would be made about the historic significance of a property. So if we surveyed an entire neighborhood, perhaps only 30% Of that neighborhood warranted additional research through a more intensive historic survey with building changes.
I have a question, and it goes to, I guess, the. How? I'm a stomach. So, so I'm not sure how to ask the question. So that's why it's going to take a little bit of time. I guess, is it? To either retain or not retain the historical integrity? Is it mostly subjective or is there bright lines? Is there a bright line that is a gray for a while and then it's clear that it's not? And I've driven, I drove by the properties today and I look at the pictures. And I look at the property and other than the windows on the north side. It looks about like the same building it was when it was originally built. And so from, I just don't have a lot of background and we haven't done a lot of this type or taking it off. We've done more where that goes on. But what is the, the, the line that we say? What was done in 69 or, or 78? Made it go from potentially being historic in 2020 to not being historic. So and I guess the follow up question on that is, is if everything was the same, would it, would it, would it even qualify to be historic at that point?
So first of all, I'd like to say that our ordinance requires a qualified professional under the Secretary of Standards. To evaluate whether or not a building is eligible for historic designation. So it's much like being a biologist or a traffic engineer. Based on their educational background, they look at the California National Register criteria, which there's four. And then there's seven aspects of integrity. And it's based on their professional judgment, they, that they make a recommendation to the city on whether or not the building should stay on the list. And I do want to say there's a difference between a reconnaissance level survey and an intensive survey. A reconnaissance is basically a drive by survey with a preliminary. Basically, that maybe this property should be looked at again. Intensive surveys have conclusions about formal significance in relationship to the national and California register and the integrity. So both Dr. Dr. Kirk, as well as Kent Seavey are qualified professionals. And so we do rely a lot on their recommendations as we look at what buildings qualify and don't for historic designation. And they're on the phone and you can ask them a lot more detailed questions. They're going to be able to provide more information.
Is the major difference between this and the 78? Survey, the windows?
Well, I think Christie evaluated, mentioned all the changes that have occurred to the building over time. And so this is a more complete analysis of those structures.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Go ahead. So the, Christie, the, the building is on a corner, right, of Del Monte and what, Washington?
Figueroa.
Del Monte and Figueroa.
Figueroa. So the, I understand the primary facade, and that's obviously the primary facade. But the other elevation that's seen in that 19, I don't know, 43 photograph. You can see the whole side of it facing Figueroa or whatever the other street is. And so is that, that secondary street, what is the, what are the secretary's standards? You know, most of the time when you're looking at buildings, primary facade, and then the sides aren't facing anything. They're just sort of facing adjacent properties. In this case, the side is facing a street and the public. What is the, what are the secretary's standards in regards to that second, you know, that side elevation facing the street?
I'd like to refer to Dr. Anthony Kirk. Or Kent Seavey, who's on the line.
Okay, any other questions? Well, let's, let's wait till we finish up with the staff.
Sure.
And then we'll move on. I do have one other question, and that is recently, we looked at the, the issue of seawater. Coming into the Listero. Does this building fit in that footprint?
Can you help me answer that one?
Yes, that, that area is currently within, you know, future flood zones.
Okay. Thank you. If we could ask the applicant and his expert to come online, would appreciate it. You wish to make a presentation?
Yeah, David, David Howe here. Thanks for your careful consideration. Very much appreciated. And happy to be accompanied here with Kent Seavey. And I know that Dr. Kirk is also on the call.
And you want me to speak first or Dr.?
Anything you wish.
The answer in this particular instance is the integrity of the building. The building was built as the Tice Electric Shop. And it is not atypical of a building of its period of construction in the post-war or early post-war era. What has happened is the fenestration, the rhythm of voids and solids has been completely changed. Also, as to Mr. Latassa's comment on the Figueroa side. All those windows are not original to the building envelope. So fenestration. What is it? I think there's no term. The windows to the soul of the building, the eyes of the stadium. And so it has lost its physical integrity as, in its ability to express itself in its original function or use. Plus, it lost its use. Generally speaking, in the commercial thing. This started out as a electric shop. It ends up as a liquor store and sandwich shop. So its historical, historic significance has been compromised as well.
Okay, you wish to have your Dr. Kirk make a presentation? Do we have questions? Go ahead.
Dr. Kirk, are you unmuted?
Perhaps, let's see.
If you just put your cursor down at the lower left hand part of your screen, you should be able to unmute.
Yep. Well, I'm unmuted, but I'm not seeing. Dr. Kirk anymore. There he is. Dr. Kirk, can you, can you unmute your, your computer? At the bottom left?
Or maybe Sarah, are you able to help?
There we go. Let's see.
Tony, the question is integrity?
Let's see, is it under David?
It's, it's under David Howe.
For a separate name. So let's see. Looks like you're unmuted.
There's two David Howes.
Oh, there's two. Okay, let me unmute the second.
Thank you.
There we go.
There we go. So just unmuted.
Dr. Kirk, we can probably hear you now.
We should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
You can. Perfect.
Okay. Yeah. Well, now, ask me the question again, please.
Well, actually, we asked if you wanted to make a presentation before we got to questions. But if, if you're ready, then we can just ask questions. Commission, do you have any questions of any of the people online right now?
So it looks like we just lost Dr. Kirk. So let's allow him to rejoin the conversation. I don't know whether Mr. Howe can. Text him to see what the situation is because he was unmuted.
I'm doing that now.
Thank you very much. Thanks for everybody's patience as we work through all the technical issues. I appreciate that.
Our new reality.
Are we still in touch with these years? Are we still in touch with these years?
We're still on.
Okay, for dead air, SEQA requires to have a historic property qualify as an historic property. It has to meet two things. One, it has to have physical integrity. And it has to have significance. If it lacks one or the other, then both of them fall out. It cannot be handled as an historic property. In this instance, in a sense, it's lost both. It started out as a particular kind of business, ends up a liquor store and a restaurant for the historic aspect of it, for the historic significance. And the integrity of the building has been compromised by changes over time. One of the things that they done, and that is kept all the windows in the original voyage, you probably would have been able to, it would have stayed listed. But the fenestration has been essentially entirely changed. The form of the building is still there, but you couldn't on a bet put that in nineteen forty-five. Its period of significance visually.
Thank you, Kent. It looks like we have Mr. Dr. Kirk back and it looks like he's unmuted.
You can hear me now?
Clear.
Excellent. Okay.
Any question?
Ask the question again, please.
Well, I asked if you wanted to make a presentation before we ask questions, so.
No, I don't have a presentation to make. I would just say that I carefully read Kent Seavey's report. And I agree with it in its entirety. The only thing that I didn't agree with, and it's a small point, is he refers to something as Spanish eclectic. And I think that Spanish colonial revival, it's a superior term, but I'm sure he likes Spanish eclectic as more than I like Spanish colonial revival. That's what?
Any questions of any of these parties?
And so you answered my question. My question was going to be, if if everything was equal, meaning no changes made to the building outside, would it likely qualify as a historic resource? And the changes that were done are the what makes it not qualify?
Well, I would say this, it's it's for me, it's an unanswerable question. Because in order to establish whether or not it's architecturally or historically significant within a potential potential context of a district, I would have to actually go and look at all the buildings in the district. I haven't done that. I've just looked at the two buildings at five hundred and five zero eight. And I agree with Ken on those. But in order to say whether or not they would be significant if they hadn't been altered as part of a district, I would have had to drive to Monterey and look at what had been the whole district.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question of staff. So the the applicant provided the historic intensive survey as part of the application. And then they went and got a second historian to write a report. That wasn't required. That was just sort of extra evidence that they thought might help the this appeal.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And Chair Brassfield, I just wanted to share with you, we do have Vice Chair Kathy Cullum on the phone and Commissioner Geraldine Smith-Cravelo from the Historic Preservation Commission. And they may or may not wish to make a public comment, but I would invite them to have this opportunity after you're done.
Okay, I have a one question, and that is the original application to make it a historic site was one process and now we're asking, they're asking to remove that category. Does that add strength to one study being better than the other?
So the request to the Historic Preservation Commission was to remove the property from the reconnaissance survey list. They decided not to take action or there wasn't, it was a tie. So that's why the appeal is coming before the planning commission to make a decision.
Okay, so when that original came up, was there any action by the property owners at the time?
So you're asking Chair Brassfield, I think, about the original historic survey. And the city of Monterey received a grant from the Office of Historic Preservation to do a survey of our entire downtown, so extending from Lake El Estero to Van Buren Street. And that coincided with our preparation of the downtown specific plan. And I do want to point out that this building was not formally identified as a historic resource. It was identified as a building that required future research through a reconnaissance level survey. So the previous property owners never filed an application for the, I think we did that around two thousand ten to two thousand twelve, we prepared that historic survey. And it helped serve the foundation of our entire downtown specific plan. Because we wanted to make sure that we weren't, well, we wanted to make sure we understood the extent of where the potential historic resources might be within that district.
Thanks, Kim, because that's the clarification I was looking for is who initiated this whole issue. But that, thank you for answering that. Any other questions? If there's no further question of the applicant or staff, I'll bring it back to the commission and close public.
So we we do need to open up to public.
That's where I'm going right now is that we have public comment that we still need to initiate. So Sarah, that's on you.
There is nobody on the line.
Absolutely. So there doesn't appear to be anybody on the line at this time. But I'll take a moment again to announce the information for public comment. Of course, you can join the meeting using Zoom Gov from a computer or phone. And the link can be found at isearchmonterey.org under the recent tab. And our webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. You can join by telephone also by dialing eight three three five six eight 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 six four or six six nine two five four five two five two. And in order to make a public comment, simply raise your hand using the Zoom feature. Or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine and then star six to unmute yourself one called upon. So with that being said, I'll take a look.
I'd like to hear from the HPC ladies.
Yeah, and just to confirm, we currently don't have any outside public comments. So if anyone joins in, I will be sure to let you know.
So Commissioners Smith-Cravelo and Cullum, if you want to unmute yourself, you can make a public comment. So you would put your cursor down in the bottom left quadrant and unmute yourself.
Bingo.
Okay, I'm Geraldine Smith Cravelo and I'm one of the commissioners. I've been on the commission five or six years. And we were, this was a split vote. We had this property, we discussed this property after the one that you're going to talk about next. And so we saw this in the context of the two properties because they're part of a little community of properties. We also had had some community response, eighteen letters or comments expressing a desire to, an interest in the properties. And so we were affected somewhat by the fact that the people in the community respected the use the buildings have now. So we were looking at those two things. For us, the windows were an item of discussion. Certainly, they've been changed, but when we looked at them, we didn't see that the change was a big change. We thought if it was necessary, they could be put back. It wasn't an irrevocable kind of change. Now, you know, we've had other historic houses where windows have changed and we allowed them to to be historic, sometimes even null fact. Because you can restore them to, you can put in a historic window if you need to. So that wasn't a deal breaker for us. The the use of the building wasn't either because buildings are used over time. And we've seen other examples of historic buildings having different uses and continued to be historic buildings. Now, it was a three to three time. So it wasn't a, you know, we weren't sure about this building. Where the next building you're going to, we were one hundred percent voting the same way. So we saw this as part of the package more. We couldn't see a really good reason to take it out. We think the two of them sets a more historic tone coming into Monterey. We weren't ready for, we didn't know what the next project's going to be. Perhaps you'll know that. So we were a little bit worried if it possibly could be a very modern structure. It could be another, you know, McDonald's or something. Now, we just weren't sure what was coming in. And that also affected our 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 view. That's not our purview. You know, we are only, the only voice we have is to speak for the building and how those buildings fit with the character of Monterey. And we've seen various exceptions to the rules cited by Seavey and the other gentleman, Dr. Kirk. And we've seen the ability to fix it. So that's why it was a three-three vote. And we respect the determination of your commission because you have a broader view. And so we're very happy to contribute our thought at the time. And we're very happy to learn by visiting you and seeing how you handle it.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have a comment?
No, I agree hundred percent with Geraldine.
Thank you very much. And then, if you don't mind, let's bring it back to the commission for comments.
Planning Commission? Yeah, I mean, so I just was thinking about this today and what I was going to say and what I was going to hear and how we were going to, you know, how we were going to move forward with this. I think this this first one is is one that is a little, is more difficult than others that can be in in the city of Monterey. I mean, this, the city of Monterey is is one of the most historic cities in the United States and clearly the most historic city in the state of California. And to me, the default should always be prove that it's not historic unless it was a building that was built, you know, just a little bit ago. And the history of Monterey is a long history. You know, this building is not as old as the next building we're going to see. But anything that's close to a hundred years old needs to be considered, you know, really carefully looked at before we say it's not historic. I mean, as I used to walk from my office to planning meetings, I would walk walk by a couple of the Adobes. And I mean, they're two hundred years old and it's just a little Adobe shack. Nobody thought that that was historic, right? I mean, and it's only historic because the people in the city of Monterey really stood up and took a stand and said, we need to make this historic. I mean, and they were all, most of them were in disrepair and have now been fixed. But I think we need to, we need to really think about before we say it's not historic, before we say it's it's just, you know, can be, you know. I respect everything everybody said. I I I also understand that we need to follow the rules on all of this. But again, I think the default needs to be prove to me that this is not historic. And this one is way, for me, more complicated than the next one since we get, and I'll wait to make my decision on the next one until we hear everything. Because it's just, it's significantly, I mean, it looks diff, other than the shell, it does look different from the north face, the north-facing side. So I mean, I don't, I really, I really don't have, you know, I need to be convinced one way or the other that I'm still, I'm still debating in my mind. The, you know, the letters that were written have no meaning to me at all. They they were all about saving the the business inside, and that's not what we're here. We're here to talk about is the integrity of the building itself and whether or not it qualifies. So I mean, if somebody would have had a historic letter talking about what it was back then, but not at least all of them that I, you know, I read through them and they scanned through them. And they did not do, they didn't sway my my opinion one way or the other. Because again, we're looking at it as in a historic context. And again, my default is prove to me that it's not historic. That's all I have to say at this point.
Anybody else?
I have a comment.
Mike?
Those of those of you who know me know know that I live in a in a historic home with the Mills, with the Mills Act contract. And there's at least two others of us here who who are the same, have have historic homes. I value the heck out of my historic home. And and when I look at these these two, these two buildings, actually that whole block, I see, I see, you know, interesting buildings that are that are old, very old, and I think historic. And I would hate to see them gone because once they're gone, they're always gone. You know, we'll never see them again. And I'm all for preserving the history of Monterey. I was eight years the president of a preservation society. And so I I look at buildings like this and I've worked with Kent, I've worked with Tony, with Tony Kirk both. And you know, as 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 a preservationist. And and I I feel very strongly that these two buildings are, this building that we're talking about right now are historic and we should keep them.
Any other? I'd like to say something if I might.
Please.
That's this, for me, the question is not so much whether or not the buildings are historic. Kent didn't go into it in any depth at all, but he showed convincingly that they had lost their integrity. And if you have a building, no matter how historic it is, if it's lost its integrity, it is no longer significant. And these buildings, because of the changes in fenestration on the ground floor and above, have lost their integrity. It's a very simple matter. And I cannot at all consider these things to be historic any longer. You talk about what used to be there or what could be there. But when you evaluate a building, you evaluate what is there, not what could be or what used to be or what might be. It's a simple matter of looking at what is there today and making a decision about it. And in doing my peer review of Kent's work, it was very apparent to me, look at the photograph of how the building originally looked when it was constructed, that it looks significantly different from facade, which is the main face of the building, one that people see when they drive by. And that it had lost its integrity and so therefore was no longer a historical building.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments from the commission?
I'm sure I have a comment. Go ahead, Terry. So I understand Hudson's sort of well, well-expressed uncertainty about how to proceed. But the, I think Kim Cole made a statement that really helped me out, which is that we really do depend on these professional historians in this case. And because the Secretary of Standards are, you know, there's a lot of exact sort of language and semantics that they depend on, especially terms like integrity and and such. So the applicant, you know, had the, what I think is a very good analysis done by Mr. Seavey. They actually went to the trouble of getting a secondary you know, comments from Dr. Kirk. And I I tend to agree with the staff that you do have to draw the line somewhere. And if the historians say these buildings have lost their, this building has lost its integrity, I'm willing to go along with that on analysis because I'm not an expert myself.
Thanks, Terry. Comments?
Can we hear from Dan Flescher?
I had unmuted myself. I agree with Terry. I think I feel very strongly that we have a set of rules and guidelines and standards by which to judge these projects. And it becomes very cut and dry. To me, it either applies or it doesn't apply. Not every building is worth the status of historic, you know, designation. You know, we're trying to save the best of the best and I just don't think this building falls into that category, so I would support its removal.
Thanks.
I echo that.
Steve, you have a comment? Steve, you have a comment?
I'm ready to vote.
Well, I do have one comment. I'm a little confused. We, we have, and I, I really appreciate what Hudson said, but the stake came down and identified a structure as potentially historic and I recall that some of the, the buildings that we've voted on in the past to make historic had different interiors than what originally was declared the, the historic value. And I'll use the Ice House as an example. There were changes on the outside, um particularly cooling towers, et cetera, that it changed what the building was used for, but it was declared as historic because of what it looked like. So I'm a little confused with the values that we're placing on what is inside versus what is outside. Uh, but aside from that, I'll gladly take a motion.
All right. Um, I move that the planning commission approve the appeal and adopt a resolution overturning the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to not take action on the applicant's request to remove the property from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list.
I'll second that. We have a first and a second. The only discussion point I'd like to make is that we heard from Kim that this area is in an area that is under, could be under a microscope in the next few years. Where it's located and the potential we're gonna have in that area for ocean takeover. So aside from that, I'll take any other comment before the vote.
Yeah, um, there is uh this uh, uh, the expert wanted to, is raising his hand.
We're, we're closed from comment.
I, I know, but I mean, if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have the sta- if we're gonna allow staff to treat the experts as quasi-staff, we should have allowed staff, I mean, that, I mean, we already did once with, with one expert. I think we should allow it for another one.
Very well. Doctor?
Oh, no, it's just a sardine major.
Oh.
Uh, to answer the chair's question about the Ice House. The Ice House physically is intact on the exterior of the building. I did that work on that building. The building is intact. If you look at that photograph from the air that shows the two facades in question, you'll see that building to the rear. And the no window changes. It was pretty much pristine at its level. The use change, yes, occurred, but a major portion of it, you know, we can't keep it as an Ice House. Uh, and everything else was intact. In this instance, the facade of five hundred is kaput. And the facade of five oh eight, we'll talk about in a minute. But that is the answer to your question, Mr. Chairman. That building had sufficient integrity to be retained.
Not the inside, sir. That's what I was referring to.
The inside doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to anyone.
No, it, it doesn't. That's my whole point.
That's the point.
That, that is my point. Uh, it's not relevant to what we're trying to vote on here, but we literally look, we typically look at the outside. Okay, uh.
Yeah, so just my, my only other comment is that I, I mean, I, 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 you know, I have been convinced, so.
If we could have the vote, roll call.
Poor thing, Chair. And we have Chair Brass Fields.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Oh, Commissioner.
That was a no.
Nope, thank you. And then we have Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Aye.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Another six to one loss.
Six to one. Five to two.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chair, you, you might mention the appeal period.
We have an appeal period and now I'm a little confused because in the document it says thirty days, but typically it's ten days.
So it, um, it is, it is ten days. If I made a mistake in the resolution, let me just look. Um, so I don't know, I'm seeing on page sixty-seven of your packet, it says that it's appealable to the city council within ten days of the date of the action. So.
Well, I assumed it was ten days, but I did read that within thirty days. So anyway, ten days, if you would. Um, and let's move on to item number four.
Kim, it says thirty days and it's on page, um, just letting you know it's on page pa- uh, page, packet page nineteen.
Thanks, Hudson.
That's to transmit the decision, not the actual appeal period is in the following. So I copied the other directly from the code.
Thank you. It's
That's a little bit.
Using it's my point. Thank you. Uh, and I, Kristy gonna make the item number four as well?
She is. Let me just go ahead and introduce the item. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just going down in my packet so I can read the title into the record. Um, item number four is to consider the appeal of five oh eight Del Monte, appealing the Historic Preservation Commission's denial to remove the property from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list. And with that, um, Christie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Christie Sabdo. I'm a associate planner with the city of Monterey. And okay. And so I will introduce five oh eight Del Monte Avenue, applicant David How on behalf of the property owner filed an application to appeal the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of H P twenty zero two two two. Um, at the applicant's request, um, at the January twelfth planning commission hearing, the app, appellant requested a continuance just to make sure that Dr. Anthony Kirk could be present. Um, so that's why we're hearing it today. Our staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the appeal, which will remove the structure from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list. So as background, uh, the property is approximately thirteen thousand square feet, uh, containing a one and two-story commercial building. Uh, the original building was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight, was designed by Monterey contractor John Tuffner. There were two significant additions in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-nine that doubled the size of the original nineteen twenty-eight building. As reported by the intensive survey, the building design has an altered Spanish eclectic facade connected to a one-story modern commercial addition, the nineteen sixty-one addition. The exterior wall cladding is a combination of thick textured stucco on the two-story nineteen twenty-eight building and smooth stucco on the nineteen sixty-one addition. The roof forms of the original building include a central petamitted parapet with a simple flanking shed roof on the east half. And on the west half, there's a gable roof covering a three-bay Juliet balcony. The main body of the roof system is flat, as is the entire nineteen sixty-one addition to the west. Here's the construction history. Uh, nineteen twenty-eight, the building was constructed nineteen forty-five. There was a removal of a building at the rear of the lot for the nineteen fifty-three addition. In nineteen sixty-one, um, there were some alterations uh that significantly altered the original nineteen twenty-eight design. By the removal and replacement of ground floor wood fenestration with modern metal framed glazing. I'll go over that in more detail. The nineteen sixty-one um addition to the building and nineteen sixty-nine addition to the existing laundry at the rear and um additional canopy over the rear of the building in nineteen sixty-nine. So um, the nineteen sixty-one remodel, according to Kent Seavey in an intensive survey, uh, the remodel of the addition um significantly altered the building's original nineteen twenty-eight design. And in doing so, the historic pattern of solids and voids significantly compromised the building's historic appearance, appearance by both the remodel and addition. The nineteen sixty-one remodel um included the removal and replacement of the ground floor wood fenestration with modern metal framed glazing, filling in the original doors. You could see here, um, I pointed to the original doors and how they were filled in and the nineteen sixty-one uh remodel. An addition of modern windows on the west elevation. In doing so, the historic pattern, um, as I indicated before, significantly compromised the building's historic appearance. Uh, on November twelfth, the Historic Preservation Commission denied the application to remove the property from the downtown area context statement and survey list. Their decision was based on five findings. The facade appears original, introducing the stucco finish. The building retains integrity, including the French laundry due to the date of construction. Public input. The windows and doors can be restored and the city should encourage the applicant to apply for Mills Act contract. So according to the Monterey City Code, upon hearing the appeal, the planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether, in its opinion, an error was made. Um, the app, the appellant submitted a peer review by Dr. Anthony Kirk, uh, who evaluated the intensive survey prepared by Kent Seavey. And then, uh, I have some notes here on the peer review. That in the evaluation of the peer review, uh, Mr. Seavey's characterization of um the building as a Spanish eclectic style, um there was a difference by Dr. Kirk, who prefers the term Spanish colonial style revival. And Dr. Kirk disagrees with Mr. Seavey's statement that the nineteen sixty-one alterations to the building confuse, rather than complement the original character of the property. Dr. Kirk states that although construction of the large addition was not consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, it is readily evident that the work is not part of the original design of the building. Dr. Kirk goes on to state that the description of the property is full and appears to be adequate. And Dr. Kirk states that Mr. Seavey correctly observes the building maintains its original location and setting. Hasn't, which haven't been significantly altered. However, the various alterations to the facade of the building as well as the construction of the large one-story addition have resulted in significant alterations to the design. The associated work led to the loss of some of the original materials and the loss of the workmanship. The feeling of the J Toffner building has evolved since it was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight and many of the original features have been lost. Dr. Kirk concludes that the building has clearly lost its historic integrity and that the property at five oh eight Del Monte Avenue is not eligible for listing in the National or California Register of Historic Places and should be removed from the city of Monterey's list of potentially historic properties. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the appeal, which will remove the structure from the downtown area historic context statement and reconnaissance survey list. I'm available to answer any questions. And again, applicant David How is available as well as Kent Seavey and Dr. Kirk.
Any questions of staff's presentation?
I have one.
Actually, Doctor, that's, that's wait to do the planning commission first. Thank you.
Um, I have a question.
Mike?
Uh, what was this, was this a vote by the H P C unanimous?
Yes, the vote was unanimous. Um, Commissioner O'Brien was absent, so I think it was six zero, um, six to one, one is um not absent.
Right, thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions from the commission to staff? Let's open it up for public comment.
Sure, I just want to take a moment to announce one more time the information for calling in for a public comment. Um, so just a friendly reminder, if you are in Zoom and would like to make a public comment, just simply raise your hand using the Zoom function. Or if you're connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself. And if you are calling in, you can dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four or six six nine two five four five two five two. And the webinar ID for this meeting is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine.
And while we wait for public comment, um, we should invite the applicant um to give um any comments and as well as Geraldine Smith Cravelo and Kathy Callum. Thank you.
Oh yeah, we can go ahead and do that. I was gonna kind of hold it because it seemed to work into the commission, but let's go ahead and, and try that before public.
Sure, and we don't have any public comment at this time for the record, but I can go back and check that when we return to that.
Thank you. That's the applicant and his staff.
Yes, thank you. Uh, David How here. I, I do have one comment um as it relates to the public input in these eighteen letters that came in. Um, I, just from a non-architectural historian standpoint, I think it's important to note that at least seventeen of the eighteen letters were related to the, addressed the five hundred building, not the five oh eight building. And um respectfully, a lot of those letters were, those letters did not address the um, you know, truly the historicity of the building or not, but yeah, just want, thought it was important to point out that was, those letters were relative to five hundred building and not this one.
Thank you. Dr. Kirk?
I was going to point out to Christie that it's not the California Register of Historic Places, it's the California Register of Historical Resources. Small point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, if that concluded your presentation, let's open it up for public comment officially.
And we still don't have any public comment at this time. Um, once again, I'll go ahead and give that webinar ID. So our meeting ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And if you would like to make a public comment and you're in the Zoom, simply raise your hand using the Zoom function. Or if you're calling in, dial star nine to raise your hands. And it doesn't appear we have any public comment at this time, but I'll keep checking.
Let's have the ladies from the historic commission. Any comments?
Unmute. There you go.
Hi, I guess Kathy chose me to be the spokesperson. Again, I'm Geraldine Smith Cravelo and I'm, I'm speaking for the historical preservation. In this case, it was unanimous among the six members that were present. And um, based on our experience and we could cite, I think it's in the notes, and I think you had a chance to read the, the minutes and the reasons we decide. Other houses, other buildings have had changes in windows, even stuckled over the original wood. And they've been, in fact, even by uh one of the historians present, we've heard that doesn't change it. They're historical and they qualify for M L F. So we, we noticed that uh, depending on information we don't have, historians can, these experts can choose to designate buildings as following the rules or not following the rules. There's a little play there. We chose to support the building and that's our job. We're, we're looking to find ways to keep the historic buildings present in Monterey because we feel that they help define us and to have the, a major road coming in, uh, have historical buildings adds to and kind of introduces us as a town that values history. So uh, we discussed it thoroughly and we felt that even though you could say a doorway was changed, even though you could say some little, it still was changed sixty and seventy years ago, which brings it back into, is it considered historic within the guidelines? Yes, if we choose to call it historic. So it, it's, uh, there is a little room for interpretation on, on the guidelines. We certainly have to look at the, the the fact that the changes were made a long time ago within the historic uh definition as it comes, as we read it today. And it says something about Monterey when people drive into town on Del Monte and see those buildings that are historic as an introduction to our city. So um, I think, um, I think those are the main comments. What really speaks to it is with the variety of, of backgrounds. What really speaks to it is with the variety of backgrounds and experiences our members have. It was a unanimous decision in this case.
Thank you.
As person, we appreciate that and we really enjoy being here and listening to you too. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bye bye. Okay, let's bring it back to just the commission for comments.
I'll start again. I mean, I, I go with the same thing I talked about in the, my last one. This one is harder for me. I mean, it, 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 you know, when I drove by today, it other than it looking a little worn down. You know, it still looks like, and I understand that, that changes have been made to the building. But you know, if we compare the changes to this building to five hundred, the one we just saw, I mean, it, they're minor. Other than the addition, the sixty-one addition, which is close to sixty years old at this point in time. Which clearly is, although it's an addition, it's clearly a separate building. It's not, you know, it, it to me, the integrity of the, 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 the original building is still there. Yeah, there's been some minor changes to within I, I, you know, I, to me, there were minor changes. You know, moving a doorway here or there and then you couldn't even, the steel windows, but other than that, I mean, it looks to me like it's the same building. And I, you know, and in reality for me, it took a long time for me to realize that the one, the one door was, was missing because and or I just realized that the middle door was shifted over because it just, to me, the whole the, the changes were, are, again, to the untrained eye, the, the changes were, were not significant enough to, to and I compare it to the other building to, to make it, to make it, to remove it from the, the list, so. That's my position.
Thanks. Commissioners?
I suppose I could repeat the, the rant I just gave, but, but I won't. I think that, that his, history in Monterey is really, really important and, and, and I think these, uh, these this building and its, and its additions are historic by, by any definition. Thank you.
Terry?
I'm kind of also not as feeling as certain about my, about this one as the, the previous application. The feature of this building that's always, that I've always admired is that upper sort of three-part feature, you know, there are these, these windows and this sort of fake balcony on the second floor. I don't know, I'm, I'm not. I think I also share Hudson's uncertainty about the that the HPC aired in this case.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, it's clear to me that the HPC did not air and it's our duty to see whether or not they did and overturn them if they did commit error. And I don't think there's been enough evidence to show that they have.
Dan?
Yeah, this is a tough one. I think I agree with what Stevens.
Can't hear you.
I was saying, I, I agree with what Stevens just said about the air on planning commission not being able to prove that. And I want to be respectful, I mean, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission, I want to be respectful of the work that they do. I probably didn't support this one.
Sandy?
You mean you're going to support the appeal or support the applicant? The applicant. It, there are three buildings in a row. One is metal specialties, one is the Del Mar French Laundry and one is the liquor store. And the two buildings that are adjacent to each other, metal specialties and the laundry seem to be joined and just because one is kind of falling down and tired and metal specialties is all spiffy and new, it shouldn't make a difference. They both are adjacent buildings, probably built at the same time. I'm, again, I'm a little hesitant to say that the HPC aired because I'm not sure that they did. The building hasn't really lost its integrity. But I'm, I'm just the commissioner, I'm not an historian. And I see it as being different than the one on the corner. So I would tend to uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision on this one.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, well, my only comment is that it, to me, the, the changes seem to be historic as well. So, well, no matter, even what, with that done, doesn't, in my mind, doesn't change it. Aside from that, I'll take a motion. And nobody wants to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to deny the appeal. Which will not remove the structure from the downtown area historic contact statement and reconnaissance survey list. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
We have Sandy with the first and Mike with the second. Any discussion?
Can I make a comment? Are there any findings for decision that you want to include in that decision?
We've been a little wishy-washy here, haven't we, Kim? Can't really get handle on it.
I would suggest one finding and that even with the changes, it, it still maintains the initial historic value. Because they are in itself over about sixty years old. Any others? Well, we're kind of stuck.
Just for reference, Mr. Chair, there, there, we could re, review the findings that the HPC made. I think that they have five findings. I'm not sure. I'm trying to find them right now.
They were mentioned in there?
Yeah, the facade appears to be the original, including, including the stucco finish. The building retains integrity through the French laundry due to the date of the construction. They put public input. Is that right? Am I reading those correct?
Yeah.
The windows and doors can be restored. And the city should encourage applicant to apply for Mills Act contract. I mean, I, I, to me, I like one. Two. Yeah, so we're, we're just letting you, can you guys, David, can you please mute yourself? Because we're, we're actually debating and
We're not.
You're, you're not part of this anymore, sorry. And, and I, I, to me, I think that, that, that the, the changes were minor.
Is that sufficient, Kim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to say whether or not it's sufficient, but it clearly puts your, your thoughts into the record and so so what I have is even with the changes, it maintains its original historic value over sixty years old. And then Commissioner Reed referenced HPC findings one, two, three and four. So I would reiterate that in the resolution that will forward for signature.
Okay, we have first and a second. We have.
Oh, can I suggest just the the, the, the first finding, I hate to nitpick, but the first, Kim, can you read back the first finding?
Absolutely. I wrote down, even with changes, it maintains its original historic value. And then I put in parentheses, over sixty years old. We might want to change it to building.
Well, okay, and I was going to suggest maybe integrity seems to be the, a key word here instead of value.
Historic integrity?
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting that. I believe that was Hudson's language.
I don't remember what my language was, sorry.
Okay. So what do you think is integrity better than value?
I think it is if you're asking staff's opinion.
I think that's, that's kind of more like Secretary of Interior, like. And I, just one last comment before we vote is I hope the consultants, we really do value their opinions and we will continue to. They're both Kent and Anthony just do such good work. And I, I really do appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would say ditto to what Terry just said. It's important to us to hear the experts on this thing. Okay, if we could, let's have a vote. Roll call.
Or Chair, so I have Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I believe that concludes our agenda.
You should also make the appeal a comment. Sorry.
Yes, we have the same appeal period of ten days. If you wish to appeal to the city council. Thank you. Let's, any commissioners' comments?
You know, I, this is a comment going back to the other two things and it's, it's just something, and I don't want to debate it at all, at all. But I think the stat, the city should really look at when somebody's trying to to take something off of a historic list that the like doing EIRs or whatever, the, the city hires the historian and, and I, only because I think that, and I'm not trying to say that there wasn't integrity with the the reports at all, but I think it just, it gives it an, an an appearance of more integrity than the person. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm really not trying to say anything bad at all because I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, and I'm not, you know, you, you guys, I know you guys do your reports independently, but for the public, it, it looks like a much more independent review than you're hiring somebody to get the response and the report that you, you, you want. And I'm not saying that that was the case at all here. I'm an attorney. I, I we, we, you know, I understand all of how, how this works, but I just think that the staff, that the, the staff should city should be the one hiring and at the cost of the applicant, which is the same result, but it's other than that, hopefully it'll rain tonight.
Similar to Reagan and Gorbachev, trust will verify, huh?
Any other comments?
I, I'd like to just mention that both Dr. Kirk and
Pardon me, we've already, we've already closed public comment. Thank you. I, I really appreciate it, but we, we have to keep our agenda. Kim, you have any, any issues for us?
Um, just in addition to the agenda report of the Planning Office update, the next meeting, you will consider another appeal from the Historic Preservation Commission on a very similar issue that you considered this evening and that's regarding properties at four twenty-six and four thirty Cortez Streets. The VMT analysis, it looks like we're actually going to have that ready for February twenty-third and not February ninth. I want to just make one comment about VMT. Vehicle miles traveled is a new standard that we have to use under the California Environmental Quality Act to evaluate transportation impacts. So you will have the opportunity to hear a presentation from our consultants about vehicle miles traveled and the proposed new threshold of significance for the city of Monterey. So with that, thank you very much. And Mr. Howe, if you can mute yourself, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Terry.
So the, it's interesting how in the last year, we've had so many applications down in this neck of the woods that according to some studies we looked at will be underwater neck of the woods in about eighty years. So just want to be a squeaking wheel and, and urge the city to really start looking at a comprehensive approach to the whole waterfront of the city and how, how land use issues are are, are considered.
I was just going to say the same thing, so I'll add. It would be nice if it's staff in a presentation and they've mentioned the fact that this is going to be one of those properties. So anyway, any other comments? Then at five twenty-two, I'll join, adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Bye bye.